I T, you guys ready? Or A V, whatever, I T A V? All right. Good evening, everyone. Six o'clock, Wednesday, December 18th. We're going to call and order the Planning and Zoning Board meeting for December 18th, 2024. To my right, we have Brad Cohen, and we have John Baranco and Brian Donaldson. To my left, Jackie Scott, Steve Gannon, and Sheri McCartney. Let's please rise and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance-
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
Okay. We have a quorum. Would somebody like to approve the minutes from the November meeting?
Sub moved.
Mr. Donaldson moved. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Scott. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none? Okay. Let's go to the first case. Oh, wait. Anybody that wishes to be heard tonight, please stand and be sworn in. Dwayne, are you doing that, or do you want me to do it?
I will. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you provide today and the evidence is will be true and accurate? Thank you.
Okay.
Will you approach the, put it in the speak? Will you state your name for the record and whether or not you have been sworn?
Okay. And I believe, I'm not, well, I'm not sure. Do we need disclosures on this?
Yes.
Okay. So let's go ahead and start to my left. Steve, if you'll give disclosures.
None.
I have none.
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 Site visit.
And I did none, so, thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Alani Ward, and I'm with CRA. I'm Housing and Economic Development Manager. The CRA is seeking to rezonate property located just south of Northwest Sixth Street at 539 Northwest 13th Avenue. The property is currently owned by the CRA and is an empty lot of 7,910 square feet. We would like to rezone it from the RS8 zoning to Northwest Rack M U W, to make it a parking lot for the community. The parking is a problem in this area, and new businesses and existing businesses need additional parking to, to, for their customers. The proposed rezoning is intended to create additional public parking and provide support to the existing and future businesses. There are local events, sometimes at Providence Park, YMCA, at the new restaurants, and there's a real parking problem, and this parking lot would help with that, help to resolve that. Are there any questions that I could answer?
Will it be paid parking?
No, it will be public parking, yes.
I just have a question.
Yes.
Does the city ever consider, like, doing this in other, so, it's like, to me, it's like, not spot zoning, but essentially, you know, taking one at a time? Has the city ever just looked at the, at where we need parking and see where CRA has land and said, like, hey, why don't we do, like, instead of doing one at a time and coming in front of us at one of a time? And what's this zone now, residential? Is that what it's-
It's residential, yes. It's residential eight.
So instead of doing that, is it, is it, was it ever in the plans to say, hey, let's take a look at every area that needs parking, and let's just come in front of the board one time and say, like, hey, these eight places need extra parking?
Well, I cannot speak for the city, but in the CRA, there isn't a lot of land that we still own and that is not already planned for mixed-use development. So every property owner, that's up to them to, to come to the zoning board to, to have it rezoned. This is just a lot here that is close to other, to businesses that are coming into the area and that already exist in the area that the highest and best use, we think, would be a parking lot.
And the other question I have for you, did the, are the neighbors okay with it being a, because, you know, you have residential right next door. Are the neighbors okay with it being a parking lot?
We had a meeting, and we sent out two communications to the neighbors within the 300-foot radius around this property, and we had no objections.
Jackie?
Hi. I, when I look at this, it does look like spot zoning to me. You've got this whole section of RS8, and you're going to carve out one lot to create parking, but, but you don't have anything for a long-term plan of what's going to happen to this RS8 district.
This lot actually abuts to the north, yeah, to the north of it, to, to other Northwest Rack zoned areas.
That's the purple area, right?
That's the purple area, yes.
But, but what happens to the people that own 535, 533? I mean, makes no sense to me. I mean, I can see it satisfying a need of the CRA, but I, I just don't think it's fair to, to carve that out without an overall plan for all the other properties or the zoning. It should be consistent.
Well, we, we cannot ask for rezoning of the private properties, and the CRA, that's the only parcel the CRA has in that area. If the other owners of the, of this area would like to have their properties rezoned, that's up to them, and the CRA can't do anything about that. We're trying to, in the mixed-use buildings that are going to go up in the area, parking is incorporated into the structure. So usually, the second and third floors are parking for the residents of that building only, and the other visitors to the area don't have anywhere to park except for the street parking that's available there now. And that's actually a big detractor for new businesses to come into the area. And we're trying to develop this area the best we can with the limited space that we have.
I just always think it's a slippery slope.
Any other questions? If the record will reflect that Patrick McTeague showed up at 6:07. Patrick, we're on case UDP Z24011. Do you have any disclosures? Okay. All right. If there's no other questions of the applicant's counsel, we'll open this up for the public hearing. Is there anybody that wishes to be heard on this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public participation, bring it back to the board for further discussion or a motion.
I just have one other comment. The, the lots that are directly on Sistrunk, are those owned by, by the city? Are those owned by the CRA?
No, they're, they're privately owned. You mean these empty lots here?
Yeah. The one, especially the one, all the way to the west. The last lot, all the way to the, the west. Is that owned by the CRA?
This way?
The other way. Yep.
That's the east, actually.
There is no number on it. The east, then?
The east, yes.
I was trying to, is that owned by the CRA?
I believe so.
Right. So why isn't that going to be a parking lot that's directly on Sistrunk?
Yes, I think that is already planned out for a mixed-use development. I'm not quite sure about that.
Because that property is probably more valuable than the property that's in the neighborhood with the residents?
Correct.
Yes.
Thank you.
Steve, do you have a question?
Oh, a comment on, on the comments about spot zoning and other things. It, the, the underlying, the underlying land use in that RS8 is the, is the MU, the future land use, and it shows, it looks like the city is planning the whole area to get redeveloped. You know, it might be 15, 20 years from now, but I think we're moving in the right direction. And putting a parking lot there, it's, it's a vacant lot. We haven't built anything. You pave it, and there it is. And then future, you can do different things. Maybe someone's going to want to, like, some of the houses will probably become multi-story, maybe other things, and, and that one could too, when the time comes, as parking gets good on the other one. So it looks like it's in, in the planning for it, and it, and you've got to admit that those lots are, are adjacent to the, to the Northwest Rack now, which is, which you've got to figure is going to go mixed-use and, and heavy stuff. So it's not like that far into a neighborhood, a quiet little neighborhood that we're, they're doing this.
Yes.
Okay. Any other comments or questions for the applicants?
Chair, just one comment. The underlying land use, I was going to bring that up. The other thing, too, is there are parts of our code that allow folks to expand into residential zoning districts for parking purposes, and it's a totally different instrument to do that, but this kind of serves the same purpose. And I think, because it's in contact, you know, it shares an edge with that zoning district, and the underlying land use is the same, I'm perfectly okay with this. I don't see this as spot zoning.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none up here at the board level, does somebody would like to make a motion? If we were to have a motion, Dwayne, which, which item would we be reciting?
So you would, page two, under either number one in the center for approval, or number two for denial?
Thank you. Page two, middle paragraphs. If somebody wants to make a motion.
I'll make a motion. I make a motion to recommend approval. I move to recommend approval of case number UDP-Z24011, based on the following findings of fact, the facts of the city staff report, and/or based on testimony here by the applicant and the board hereby fear finds that the application meets the applicable criteria of the ULDR cited in the staff report, and any conditions that may be listed in the staff report.
Okay. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Who's second, and I'm sorry?
Steve.
Steve. Thank you. Motion is second. Any further discussion before we vote? Leslie, please call the roll.
Mr. Baranco?
Yes.
Mr. McTeague?
Yes.
Ms. McCartney?
Yes.
Mr. Gannon?
Yes.
Mr. Donaldson?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
I can't support this. I haven't had the chance to drive through the area, and it just, it does bother me, so I'm going to vote no.
Vice Chair Cohen?
No.
Chair Wimeth?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. All right. On to the next case, UDP P24001. Good evening. While you're coming to the podium, please state your name. You need to turn the speaker on. There you go. Microphone, not speaker.
Good evening. My name is Elizabeth Surktesian, Police Land Surveyors.
Thank you.
5381 Nob Hill Road, Sunrise, Florida. I'm here on behalf of the applicant.
Thank you. Steve, if you'll start off with disclosures, please.
Drive-by site visit.
I have none.
Site visit.
None.
Brad?
None.
Site visit.
Site visit.
And I had none. All right. Good evening. Welcome.
Thank you very much. We, I don't believe we have a presentation, because this is very straightforward. The property was required to be platted per Broward County regulations in order to be redeveloped, so the plat is now restricted to 20,000 square feet of commercial use. That includes the existing building and the upcoming new structure, which will contain a Taco Bell drive-through. The lot will now, after plating, it will become official lot of record, which is the main purpose of, of the plat.
Okay. Anything else?
That's it. I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Does anybody on the board have a question of the applicant's counsel?
Just only question, FDOT. You've already run it through FDOT. They've approved everything, so they've approved it, yeah.
We, we have been reviewed by FDOT and by Broward County Engineering.
And they're, they were very nice, allowing you to maintain all those openings, and I was very surprised by that.
I know, but we had a traffic study, and, and it was determined that it was necessary. And we, we are keeping, well, it has nothing to do with the plat, actually, but we are keeping the, you know, safe distance to first point of conflict and all of that good stuff.
Any other questions or comments for the applicant council? At this point, I will open the meeting to the public for anyone who wishes to speak on this item. Hearing and seeing none, I'll close the public portion, bring it back to the board for further discussion or a vote.
I'll make a motion if no one's going to ask any questions. Comments?
No questions, no comments.
Okay.
Just silence.
That's what it sounds like. I move to recommend approval of case number UDP-P24001, based on the following facts, findings of fact, the facts of the city report, and/or testimony heard by the applicant, and hereby find that the application meets the applicable criteria of the ULDR cited in the staff report.
Okay.
Second.
We have a second. Any further discussion before we take a vote? Leslie?
Ms. McCartney?
Yes.
Mr. Gannon?
Yes.
Mr. Baranco?
Yes.
Mr. Donaldson?
Yes.
Mr. McTeague?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Vice Chair Cohen?
Yes.
Chair Wimeth?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Have a good evening. Next up, case UDP-S23044. I don't know what protocol is on this. This is a first for me, so-
Sure.
I don't know if there's somebody from the city that's presenting, or if Mr. Lockery's presenting, or we just go to a vote, or how does this all go? Not that easy, huh?
So this is an appeal of a denial from the DRC, I believe, and it's treated as a du novo, so you would treat this just like a site plan Level III application.
Okay.
Have the applicant present, and staff will present or, or provide their reason for denial, and you will determine whether or not to approve the site plan.
Fair enough. Thank you. So let's start with disclosures. Steve?
Numerous site visits, and, and I live near there, and I shop there sometimes. Spoke with applicant's attorney, and that's it. I'm sorry, I also got an email communication.
I spoke with the applicant's attorney.
I had a phone call from a representative for the applicant's attorney, and I've also done site visit.
I spoke to the applicant's attorney, and I spoke to Jim Hetzel from city staff, and I don't need a site visit. I grew up right there.
Site visit, and I met with applicant's attorney.
Sorry. Spoke to city staff, spoke to applicant's attorney, site visit.
Site visit, and a meeting with the applicant's attorney.
Excuse me, Chair. I'm sorry. When you're ready, we have correction, we have a correction we need to make.
You have a correction to make?
Yes.
You want, wait until the end? Do you want to do it at the beginning?
I do it now, and also, we would ask for the applicant to clarify the address and legal description and folios that are attached to it.
Let me get my disclosures in, and then-
Sorry about that. Yep.
That's quite all right. I did a site visit, I received an email, and I spoke to Mr. Hetzel as well. So you are, introduce a clarification, and then we'll ask him for the actual, for the address.
So we, the denial notice, which is Exhibit Five in your backup, there is a one-line item that was removed, which was number four, and I'm going to distribute hard copies of the updated denial notice. The applicant received one as well. And then, once the applicant is ready to present, we'd ask for them to clarify the folio numbers and legal description for the subject matter, application.
Is that something that you can do, Mr. Lockery? Do you need to go to bcpa.net?
Good evening. Robert Lockery, on behalf of the applicant and Publix supermarkets, to the chair and the members of the board. I actually tried to do that on BCPA, but there's no cell phone signal in this building, so, at least that I can get. But what I can tell you is there is a survey of the property that's attached to the application. It includes a lengthy legal description of the Coral Ridge Mall and the property where the Publix is, so we will certainly agree that that survey that's part of your application is the survey of the property.
Okay. All right. Anything else?
All right. Good evening, and I know this is the last item before the holiday, so I will try to get through it fairly quickly. And I also am not the attorney I know that most of you met with. Nectaria Chakas, Nectaria was double-booked tonight, and I guess because of my gray hair and knowing a little something about the inner district corridor, it was decided I could cover this one while she handles another matter. So thank you for entertaining us for this. As the staff report indicates, as the city attorney has indicated, this is a request for approval of a site plan Level Two, determina, or rather, to, an appeal of a site plan Level Two determination, to approve a Publix located at the Coral Ridge Mall at the location of the current Publix located at the Coral Ridge Mall. What I'm going to do this evening is do a quick overview of the site, a little bit about the history of the site, then describe the application that's before you, the specifics of the plan, and then talk a little bit about the, the provision that we believe we do comply with as it relates to the application. First of all, I don't have a clicker down here. All right. So this is the Coral Ridge Mall. I'm sure everyone's familiar with it, as well as I know a lot of you are familiar with the, the Publix itself as well. It's approximately a 39-acre site. It was developed in 1962. It's had a lot of tenants over the years. The one tenant that has remained from the very inception is the Publix. It was actually Phase One of the project. It's completed towards the end of 1962, while the rest of the mall was already under construction. I actually have a picture of the newspaper article celebrating the Publix opening and the mall being already under construction. This is from December 16th, I'm sorry, March 17th, 1962. What's important about the site is that it is a, essentially, a regional mall, and it's a very active mall. That has a lot to do, I think, with the good tenant mix that's currently in there. You know, you've got Targets, Marshalls, TJ Maxx, Old Navy, Ross, Hallmark. I was there yesterday at 10:30. I was there yesterday at ten-thirty, and that mall's a lot busier than another mall we happen to have in our city. And it probably is like that every day. Not only is the mall itself busy, but Publix is busy. Now, I'm not suggesting that everybody who goes to the mall walks over to Publix, but some folks certainly do, and they do share that central parking lot as it was originally developed and designed. So again, this is nineteen sixty-two, and this is the proposal for the new Publix on site. And I'm gonna take you back a step and walk you through some of the specifics. What's important to note is that the Publix actually acts as kind of a standalone anchor for the mall. It's located at the north end, but it's the bookend of the mall. There previously was a restaurant at the far southern end. It originally opened, it was the Round Table. I knew it as Husong and Larry's. Some of you may remember that. And of course, the Bimini Beach Club at one point spent some time in this mall as well. Brad remembers that. I do, too. So a lot has come and gone in this mall and in this shopping center. One thing that hasn't changed, of course, as I said, is the Publix. The area that's circled in yellow is the area that we're gonna be describing tonight. One of the other things you notice is that the parking lot pretty much meets nineteen sixty-two standards, certainly not two thousand twenty-four standards in the city of Fort Lauderdale. You have essentially thirty-four rows with thirty-four cars, including both sides. Before, you have any landscape breaks, no pedestrian interaction or method to move around that parking area. That's to the south of the site. As you look along the west of the site, again, which is on the left side, you have parking that's essentially right up against, it would be in that inter-district corridor that we're gonna talk a little bit about, as well as parking north of that, along the, along the, the store itself. There is a five-foot sidewalk out in FDOT right away, but other than that, on the west side of the property, there's no sidewalk. Along the north of the property, along Thirty-third, the yellow line kind of blocks it out, so it's hard to see. But there's two access points there. That's where all the deliveries and trash pickup and everything occurs today. Again, no sidewalk, no landscaping whatsoever in its existing condition. On the east side or northeast side, you've got backout parking, as you can see directly into the driveway there that connects down to the mall. Again, very little in the way of landscaping or any pedestrian amenities. So that's the existing site. It is the site of the new Publix, so we'll replace that. Again, this, it's been there for about sixty-three years. It could probably last another sixty-three years, but Publix believes it's time to upgrade this facility. So this is an overview of the new parking lot and the Publix itself. I'll go in a little bit more detail, but what's really important, I'm gonna start on the bottom of the screen, which is the parking lot. It is being improved to meet today's standards. A lot of new tree islands are being installed. On the west side, up against Federal Highway, there's a new sidewalk, which is in addition to the, to the existing FDOT sidewalk, landscape strip. Similarly, on the east side, new connections directly into the mall. I won't go back to the mall picture. I'll keep moving along, but there's, the main entrance to the mall is actually right across from Publix. There's two entrances on that side of the property, and then two further to the north, and we've got entrance points to that. So previously, for example, down the right, where you see six-inch new sidewalk, right now, you just have parking right up against that drive aisle. In all, you can see a lot more landscaping around the site. We're saving quite a number of trees on the site that are there today, as well as replacing, replacing the areas or installing some additional trees. In total, there's gonna be two hundred and twenty-one new trees planted on this site if this plan is approved, rather than what is there today. The next slide is just of the Publix structure, access to the, by the way, the Publix is up on the second story. There's additional parking underneath. That's a result of losing parking when we bring the current parking lot up to code with landscaping, but it does provide some covered parking, which is great, too. There's an access point on the west side, up at the right, an access point to this, to the, I'm sorry, access point on the east side, on the north, an access point on the east side to the south. And on the west side of the property, there's an exit only, which is important for circulation. The plans originally had an ingress egress out there, out of that, but in talking with staff, we've made some improvements to get, to get rid of that. One of the things I wanna start with when we look at this structure is along the left side, which is the west side. As I explained today, there's, there's a five-foot wide existing FDOT sidewalk that will remain in place. And then you basically have surface parking that's a driveway through there. That driveway goes away. All those parking spaces or those out, exterior parking goes away. Answered place is a new landscape strip, then a full ten-foot wide sidewalk, then another landscape strip, and within that landscape strip are flowering trees as well as palms. And then it connects up to the north. I'm gonna go through each side of the building in, specifically. This is a view from the new design on the right, as you look towards the northeast. And of course, on the left is what you see existing today. One of the things that's really important to note here is there is absolutely no pedestrian connection between Federal Highway and the existing condition, which is on the left-hand side, and the store or the mall. You literally, unless you're gonna cut across that landscaping, which you can't do because there's a hedge, you literally have to walk in the drive aisle to get into the store. And that's something that, that of course, your city staff wants to see improved with this condition, which is what we've done. You see it on the right side of connection. Another view is looking down on it. It's a little bit better. On the left, again, you see the existing condition with no pedestrian connectivity. In fact, there's a driveway with, with, with parallel parking and angled parking. The new proposal gets rid of that driveway, gets rid of those, that area of parking, replaces it with landscaping, with a, with a ten-foot wide sidewalk, as I said, a trellis, shade trees. And I'll show you some of the design around the building itself along that side. Whoops. One of the other things we wanna do is show, whoops, changes that we've made since the plan was originally submitted in two thousand twenty-three. And I alluded to this a little bit when I was talking about some changes that were made to that driveway. The plan on the left was the plan that was originally submitted. Really, what's important to look at, if I can look at, right, here we go, is down in this area. First of all, there was a two-way ingress and egress. There was a sideways sidewalk connection, but it was somewhat minimal. And of course, there was nothing, no additional detailing on this side of the building. On, in response to discussions with staff, this driveway was closed to an exit only, to get rid of any ingress into the, the garage from that location. Opened this plaza up significantly with additional landscaping and additional area. Make some enhancements along this portion of the building, including new design features, bringing the building in this, this is a basically a, a wood veneer. It's made of metal, but it appears as a mahogany up to the side of the building, and the, this is glass. So we have actually added spandrel glass to this portions of the building and glass along the bottom floor. This shows the elevation. You never quite see it in here, but we wanted to show some of the different elements, but in particular, the superior treatment that's been placed along Federal Highway. You really see it all over the building. But we have, this is that wood mahogany veneer that I talked about, that appears along the tower portion, as well as enhanced portions along to break up the facade of the building. This is stacked stone, and then you have glass all the way along this portion of Federal Highway. So that's the west side of the building. Now I wanna turn to the north side of the building, where we are proposing to bring the sidewalk back to the sidewalk at a new five-foot sidewalk that doesn't exist anywhere today along Thirty-third, add new landscaping at this corner. Actually, this is a driveway right now into the loading area. Remove that completely. Put a lance, put trees along this area, along with a high wall to block this entire area. Reconfigure the ingress and egress here, which I'll show you in just a minute. And again, continue the sidewalk up and, as you'll see in a minute, into the neighborhood, where no such sidewalk exists today. On the left is the existing condition. The sidewalk tapers off as you go further to the left, but you get the gist of what's there today. And then on the right, you see what we're proposing. This is the same angle. You have Federal Highway exactly, kind of on the right of each one of these slides, and Thirty-third over on the left. So you see, right now, trucks come right in there. Anyone who's been to AMC or been to this Publix or the mall knows what that looks like. We believe this is a far superior addition. One of the other things we did with working with Coral Ridge Estates was work on the rear of the building. Still have a back of a Publix, still has all that loading and unloading that has to occur all the time. But on the left, what you see is that access point you just saw that I showed you, which is directly in off the street. And then there's a secondary ingress and egress right here onto the main street. You also have the situation where the mall leads just out into Thirty-third without any control devices. And these drive aisles from the mall itself, and this is really, for those of us who go to the AMC knows how this works, flows right out of this area as well. So you've got traffic that's coming in, going to the neighborhood. You've got truck traffic that's coming in behind the store. You've got traffic that's coming into the mall, and you've got traffic that's exiting from these parking, all at this intersection, which is really not a very good situation. The solution for that took many months, took a lot of time and work, both with your city's traffic engineering department, as well as with the neighbors. And what's happened is, whoops, we've gotten rid of the access points that were, basically taken two access points and turned it into one. Trucks now, I'll start with the truck traffic. Trucks will now come in to this location. They will back in to the loading and unloading, and will never have to go back out through this intersection. Instead, they will come, they will exit onto this driveway and turn through here. And that's really where the most important improvements were made. This area will now be expanded out. I wish I could point like in the old days. This area will be expanded out with landscaping, with additional sidewalks. There'll now be a stop bar here, and really, whoops, really importantly, this driveway here, we had to get permission from our landlord, because Publix is just the tenant. They did a grant that permission after several back and forth, has been, has, will be shut off if this project's approved. That allows traffic to circulate back to a more focused approach with an intersection and a much safer approach for the neighbors to the north than everyone else. One other important factor is we will now be installing a sidewalk that not only exists along the back of the building and on the Federal Highway, but will now extend into the neighborhood directly up thirty, this Thirty-third, and then up Twenty-third into the neighborhood. Whereas you see on the left side, that doesn't exist today. There's no pedestrian connection into the neighborhood, back and forth, which we think will be good for Publix. The next view, go over it real quickly, is the west, east side of the building along the mall. Similar to what we showed on the other sides, we now are, this is all backout parking today. That backout parking goes away completely, so you no longer have cars pulling back into the drive aisle. There'll be a landscape strip along this side, a new eight-foot wide sidewalk, another landscape strip with trees, and that'll carry around to the front of the building. So this is a view, a little bit less dramatically different than some of the others, but still dramatic. On the left, some of the things you can note is, as I said, the cars that are parked in the existing parking spaces that actually hang out into the drive aisle in the front of the picture, the back of the picture, the lack of landscaping, and really, the appearance of the building as a, as a flat wall, which again, made a lot of sense in nineteen sixty-three. It's now being updated with two different types of stone you see on the building, as well as the wood veneer, and a lot of glass going into the, the front of the building as well. And this is the front view of the building, looking at the Publix portion of the building centered, which is really important when we look back at the overall plan, because, now I'll switch back. We see that traffic comes to the site, most of it, we know, that comes from vehicles. Cars will be parking both in the garage and in the parking bay in front. And as a result of that, we want the lobby where they can get in and out very easily and quickly, the most efficient manner, particularly when you're talking about shopping carts and all that's involved with that. But we also have to think about pedestrians. And while there will be potentially pedestrians on Federal Highway, we know today, the folks who would be walking to this if they chose to would most likely be coming from the neighborhoods, our neighbors, to the northeast. The closest access to them is to, on the east side of the building. We also have the mall that's on the east side of the building. And so the, the lobby has been centered, as it is with most grocery stores, it's no surprise, but it's been centered so that folks who are coming from the neighborhood have access to the front, folks who are interacting with the mall, and the building itself interacts with the mall, as it always has, albeit it'll be enhanced from the center. And folks who are along Federal Highway now have a direct pedestrian connection that does not exist today from improved sidewalks across the property into the main lobby. So we believe that is by far the best approach to the site, particularly with the new plaza that has been added in the front of the building. Now, the, your staff report speaks a little bit about the inter-district corridor requirements. And as was mentioned in the appeal that was filed, just wanna touch on a couple legalese on that, and that's really what does the inter-district corridor requirements say. The inter-district corridor has been in place since at least nineteen ninety-seven. I thought maybe it actually predated the adoption of the ULDR, but I couldn't find it in an older version. But what it has provided, and what we've always looked at, it's a twenty-foot landscape strip, period, end of day. That's all it was as it was originally adopted, very suburban standard. There have been, over the course of years and years, and the architect on the board knows this, and a, a desire to have more interaction between buildings and the sidewalk itself. I mean, when we were doing the Walgreens, when I was working on the Walgreens at Seventeenth Street and Federal, we couldn't, at that point, the zoning staff at that time, reading those provisions very strictly, would not even allow us to have a sidewalk that went from the sidewalk along Fed-, I mean, Seventeenth Street into the site. You had to literally walk into the driveway. As we looked at other projects up and down Federal Highway, including some ones that we worked on, there was a desire to have projects have more interaction, to, to give them that ability, that flexibility to interact with the street. And in fact, I worked on one of the projects that was approved with some of that interaction before the latest amendments that were adopted in two thousand fourteen were approved, where we put shade structures out into the area between the sidewalk and the building. In that case, there was still, it's a drive-through restaurant, so there's still drive-through and everything else. And in the staff report for that project, the staff report said, we know we're not even allowed to approve this, and if we don't approve this code amendment that's coming in that lets us do some shade trellises out there, it'll have to be removed before the CO is issued. That, that was issued, that came out, and then the city came forward with the code amendment. Why am I telling all this backstory? Because what I wanna, what I really wanna let you all know, because I was involved with it at the time, is these codes amendment was to give developers greater flexibility to do more things, to add things that made sense into that twenty feet, so you wouldn't just have a landscape berm. You could actually have a pagoda, you could have a seating area, you might have some bike racks, other things along those lines, because you couldn't under the old inter-district. And that's why this provision was drafted. And what it specifically provides is, certain new things are now allowed within the twenty-foot yard. Landscaping, outdoor dining, and enhanced pedestrian amenities, such as, but not limited to, plazas, benches, shade structures, pedestrian access, bus shelters, bike racks, and multimodal pathways. That's what's now permitted. What this code doesn't speak to is any requirement of a build-to-line or a requirement that the building itself has its main entrance onto the site. Now, as I described, for a lot of reasons, for a Publix at this location, it wouldn't make sense to have a main entrance on a Federal Highway. You would all, have all those people from the neighborhood, everyone in the parking lot, taking their carts around the building, walking down Federal Highway, and then even if it's on the corner, it just simply doesn't make any sense. You actually have more interaction from the driveway off Federal Highway. But even putting common sense aside, we, we believe we meet this requirement. We have asked for additional enhancements. Staff has allowed us to put them in there. We're not obligated to do these things, but we've asked to put additional landscaping, plazas, benches, shade trees, and they have been included. The staff report talks a lot about the intent of this provision when it was adopted. And I think that's important, too, to reflect back on what the intent was when the provision was adopted. It was adopted in two thousand fourteen, and one of the important things, again, it just repeats what I just read. It says, "In an effort to enhance the use of those areas by pedestrians, as well as activate the urban edge, an amendment that would preserve the twenty-foot buffer," we still have that, "but would also allow for, not require, but allow for, certain amenities to be maintained within the twenty-foot buffer." This is, by the way, from the original staff report. I've cut three pieces of it out. I will hand out the whole staff report. So I just, this is not exactly the way it is. There's some intervening provisions such, such as, there's a big discussion about, we could come to the planning and zoning board and actually ask to put our building into the twenty-foot corridor. We're not asking for that. We're just asking for these things. So that's what it provides, but then you get down to the intent, and this is really important. When it talks about that, they have been made changes to, they have, as part of it, they made changes to the intent. And that's the intent language that you see in the staff report today. This is a staff report from two thousand fourteen. It's just important to point out that it says, "This language is not substantive in terms of the proposed criteria, but rather just acts as a reflection." My point in, in pointing that out is just to make clear that these are provisions which allow a developer the flexibility. We certainly understand the need to have interaction. We think the things that have been provided with superior landscaping, getting rid of the surface parking that you see from, you know, the outdoor surface parking, provided a, a nice appearance of the building between the pedestrian realm and making a direct connection that does not exist today between Federal Highway, the Publix, and the mall itself, is a superior design, and we would hope that you would approve it. We do agree with the additional staff recommendations and requirements if you choose to do so, including addressing all DRC comments within the time allotted. Assume we can get them all, assume, done within the time allotted, but I'm sure if approved, your staff will work with us to get that done. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Robert. Are there any questions for the applicant's counsel?
Chair, I had some questions.
Go ahead.
Having met with the other attorney in your office, one of my concerns from reading the staff report was the fact that the pedestrian access from Federal was crossing a active roadway coming out of that garage. So I had thought that, you know, picturing myself coming up on, on Federal and walking across there, I might be blindsided by somebody trying to beat the traffic out that exit and wanting to make a left turn. So I made a suggestion, and I don't know if it was relayed to the team. I thought that maybe an exit arm, so that way, as a car is approaching, if I'm walking toward the store, I'll see out of my peripheral vision on the left, oh, there's someone approaching, and they had to slow down because there's an arm. And then as the arm went up, then I knew that there was a car. So did we get any feedback on that?
Yes, Mr. Donaldson. Actually, that was suggested to me. We did run it by Publix. And not only do they, will they agree to do it, they thought it was a great idea. It would also preclude any confusion about trying to go in the Publix at that, you know, into the, into the garage from that location. So yeah, that we'd be happy to add that as a condition.
Okay. Another question? Another question was that in this, you know, we're trying to activate the inner corridor, and I know that there is a bus stop and benches just to the south of that that is existing. But in this new landscaping that is lined up from the starting of the building and going north, the reality is, is that there's going to be very few residential, aside from the new development across the way, of, of residences that are in walking proximity, coming from the west. But they may be coming from the corals that are to the west of Federal by bicycle. So in looking at the, the pla, it didn't appear that there was anywhere for bicycle parking along there.
I, I think that's correct. There is bicycle parking in front, you know, closer to the entrance, but I think that's a good suggestion as we look at the conditions.
Because I see people getting off on the bus there, and they have a bike when they're getting off at that bus stop.
Yes, so we would also, similar to the, the, having a gate arm there, we would have no objection to putting vice, bike racks into that twenty-feet area, twenty-foot area close to that plaza area in the plaza, and we can work with staff if that's a condition. You know, and looking at the things that we're allowed to have, that we're, we believe we're asking for and that are being granted, and that's we, all we think we need to do, but we're supposed to have a plaza, we got that, benches, shade structures, pedestrian access, we've got that, bus shelter, we've got multimodal pathway, and bicycle rack was the only thing we didn't have. So now we've got them all, right, and I check the box. Yeah, we're happy with that.
Okay. And then also, another suggestion, looking at it, you know, on the northeast corner, which is currently, I know I cut through that back way, if, you know, I'm coming from the beach, so I turn before Target and run around the backside because that light at Federal and Oakland is forever. So you can just like, there's no real lane markings in that back sort of corner, and you can just sort of like go on an angle and just blow through it all. So I thought that that was a great idea of, of how you've modified that. My concern is, is that for residents that are coming from the country club, and they're coming down Twenty-second, and they think they can turn at that first turn, which is actually into the loading, instead of to, they have to go to the second turn to turn in the garage. So if you have big trucks that are in there, at that turn there.
Yeah, this turn you mean.
In the first turn, I think that we need to make sure that we have good signage that says, "Do not enter." I know that you have it as an enter for only smaller trucks, but as the other attorney described, you're coming into that going east, and then backing up into the loading dock. So if someone came down the road and they said, "Oh, there's the parking garage," and they go to make an immediate right turn, they're going to run right into the front end of a semi. So I just want to make sure that that is well signed, because it's a new, it's a new pattern. So, and there's a lot of elderly drivers in that neighborhood to the north, that we have something that says, "Do not enter," that is well signed, so they know not to turn into that walk, that area.
Yeah, that's an excellent suggestion.
I think for livelihood persons.
Okay, happy to do that.
Those were my only comments.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to be heard?
Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Robert, what, this, staff talked about not meeting the certain criteria, especially relating to direct pedestrian access. How is that defined?
Well, again, if it was defined that you had to have a direct, for example, opening onto federal highway, it would have said so, and it doesn't say that, and there's plenty of examples of properties that don't. I believe what it means that you, again, it's something that they're, they're requesting because it used to be, we didn't have that, we weren't able to have it. Now you can provide that by providing, in this case, a sidewalk directly connecting federal highway to the Publix itself, so you come in.
Can you pull that up for us?
Yeah, sure.
Or can we talk about that?
Yeah. So for example, where you didn't have it before, you now have, this is the sidewalk, this is, this is like backwards, this is a mirror, so that's why I'm having a hard time here. Here we go. Here's the sidewalk. You now have this, this landing pad pedestrian plaza that then connects directly into the site along the sidewalk.
The sidewalk from Federal.
That's correct.
Directly to the building.
Direct pedestrian plaza access. It actually now connects all the way to the mall too, which doesn't currently exist that way. As opposed to reconfiguring the front of the store or a portion of the store out to federal highway, and then turning their back on the mall, on the shopping area, on the parking, and having a complication with folks coming around the sides.
Well, then it's a debate about whether that is direct, and so we could see that that is, with the new sidewalk, especially a direct access.
Yeah, I, I think we get caught up in the, you know, we're talking about pedestrian enhancements, and I think what's been done here is a pedestrian enhancement. You know, I, I think there's a lot of subjectivity when you say, "Well, pedestrian enhancement means I need a building right there, it needs to be within a certain feet, and it should have a door and everything else." What they're, what they specifically says is it wants additional landscaping, it wants you to do the ability to do trellises, it wants multi, multimodal, bike racks, all things that are being provided. That's what the code speaks to. You know, there was a form-based code proposed back in two thousand and eight. It was the US One North Highway Corridor, and it was sternly rejected by the City Commission at the time. Now, maybe that's a topic for another day, you know, similar to what we have downtown, but it was not adopted. What was adopted instead is a provision that allowed more flexibility, frankly, out of the frustration of developers, and I think city staff, that you couldn't do anything in that twenty feet, and that was not, you know, the best situation.
Thank you. Chair.
Robert, how often do they update this particular code? You mentioned the beginning.
Yeah, sorry, I jumped right to that.
It was in nineteen sixty-seven, then you said it was later. It sounds like this is kind of evolving over time.
Well, I think it is, and that's one of the things, we've got to make sure it, it evolve, you know, if it's going to evolve in a different way, that it actually be codified those changes. So it was adopted, I thought it was prior to nineteen ninety-seven. I don't know if anybody remembers, but I didn't find it in the pre-June fourth nineteen fifty-three, nineteen ninety-seven code, but it was in the ULVR that was adopted that night. And at that time, it was a strict twenty-foot buffer, you can't do anything in it. When it was first amended to relax it and allow you to do these provisions and create more flexibility was in two thousand and fourteen, and that was a result of some projects in two thousand and thirteen that wanted to have more interaction. Since then, it hasn't been updated.
So we can anticipate this is going to be updated again in the future?
Maybe start it tomorrow, but you know, I don't know. I, I think, you know, I think everything has to be looked at. There's certainly projects, and I know there's some examples in the staff report of projects that have done a building up to the street, and I think that's great. And I've worked on some projects, but that's different than saying you have to do it. I mean, the most recent project along federal highway is El Car Wash, and that certainly, you know, doesn't meet these kind of criteria. So I, I know what the code says, and you know, as I was talking about laughing about in my office, I said, "The code allows you to these, do these things, it allows you to have this direct access that it didn't used to allow." But it's not forcing you to do it. I mean, just because I can build a twelve-story building doesn't mean I have to. So maybe the code needs to look at, you know, ways to create a different reality.
Chair, I just forgot to mention, we were doing our disclosures, I did speak to Tim Hernandez from the Crow Ridge Association on this project. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you, Mr. Lockery. Does the city want to respond before we open up to public comment?
Good evening. Jim Hetzel, Acting Urban Design Plan Manager. Tyler LaForme, the case planner is also here with me. Get the presentation, move this back. Okay, that's better. First, let me start off by saying, you know, no doubt the project proposed Publix is beautifully designed compared to what there, is there today. You know, that aesthetically, it's pleasing to do the improvements. You know, the city is not in the business of denying applications. That's not a goal of the city's, you know, our role as city staff is to guide applicants, whether they be a developer or a resident, through the application process, answer questions, make sure the application is in compliance, and provide potential solutions in addressing code requirements. So, you know, the process can be very complicated. It's similar to someone's Facebook post about relationships, it's complicated. So we kind of get into that here, a little bit about what we had to, to do with this project. The basis of denial, and I think you heard this a little bit from the applicant, or compliance with forty-seven twenty-four point one, which is our development permits and procedure section, that outlines what approving body, what application type and so forth, that you have to obtain in order to get a development permit issued by the city. In this case, that is a site plan level two, which is DRC approval, that's the body that approves the project. To complete that, you need the DRC members to sign off on the project. All the members have to sign off in order for the development permit to be issued. The other basis of denial is the inter-district corridor requirements, which you just heard the applicant talk about a little bit, and we'll get a little bit more detail on how staff applies that and looks at it from a review analysis. So I just wanted to kind of general overview of our application process, just to kind of give a bigger picture here. Applications come in, staff reviews them for completeness, we issue the timeframes to complete the process. When we're reviewing it, we look at code requirements, what's applicable to the project from criteria as well, comprehensive plan consistency, and then lastly, anything that's not fully covered that are best practices, we apply through comments as well as recommendations or moving forward. So this little law called one sixty-three, one sixty-six point zero three three one is the state law that mandates that the applications that are submitted to cities get processed in a certain timeframe. For non-quasi judicial, that's a hundred and twenty days. For quasi judicial, it's a hundred and eighty days. You're granted an extension through the state law, and basically, we could work together with applicants to get those extensions issued if we mutually agree upon them. So here's the timeline for this application. Once completeness was determined, DRC meeting occurred, and as you could see, there's been several extensions granted that were agreed upon, bringing us all the way to October thirty-first, which was the last extension deadline, which the denial then was issued. So this is basically a timeline showing you how long the application has been in the Prior to the, the expiration of the timeframe, there's some correspondence that occurred. You know, city staff reached out about the possible design solutions to address the inter-district corridor requirements. We, there was communication about the status of the application, we had some internal conversations about if there was interpretation that was incorrect. We informed the applicant of still non-compliance. They inquired about next steps, and denial was discussed as well, and then there was no follow-up communication, and we were approaching our deadline date. The way the state law reads, the city has to approve approval conditions or deny the application, but there needs to be action taken within that timeframe or the extended timeframes, if you will. So inter-district corridor requirements. There are required standards, as you heard from the applicant, the twenty-foot wide yard requirement, it's quantitative, it's understandable, it's black and white, what should be provided. There's also the code intent, what is the intent of the code? Also, staff looks at previous projects, what was approved before, and then the context of the surrounding area. So staff's analysis is, is pretty extensive as far as how we look at certain applying code regulations. This one breaks down this particular code section. So the required standards, the applicant touched on a lot of these, that yes, they're providing the twenty-foot yard requirement, several of the elements are provided, you don't have to provide all of them, but there's an extensive list there that you can kind of see what was provided. Indicated the plaza location, which is in green, some of the entry points from the inter-district in the hundred and ten to, and two hundred and twenty feet to the two entrances, which is liquor store and the main entrance respectively, and the landscape that's been provided. So this is what the required clear-cut, black and white requirements are. Then you get into design intent. What is the intent of the section, what should it achieve? And it gets a little tricky here, because the design intent talks about the interface between the pedestrian and the adjacent land use, so the right-of-way and the adjacent land use. In this case, the adjacent land use, which is indicated as one, is parking. You know, the applicant is proposing the building to move closer to federal highway than it is today, and that area is still part of the parking area, it's a parking drive, driveway, if you will. The second is, does it activate the pedestrian environment? There's no doors, there's no activation along that frontage, because again, the adjacent land use is parking. The other element, the plaza, the plaza's located at the corner there, it's disconnected from the entrances, and also, then the next one on there, number four, is the interaction the pedestrian first has is with an egress from the parking area, so there's a conflict of the vehicle and pedestrian access. And then lastly, the locations of the entranceways. So collectively, we look at this saying, does the adjacent land use, what's being proposed by an applicant, meet the intent for a superior and active pedestrian environment? And our conclusion was, it did not. So some other projects, you might know some of these. This is Trader Joe's, buildings are close to the road, inter-district corridor requirements apply here, there is direct access into the building entrances, direct access to a covered plaza that had outdoor dining, parking is in the rear in this case, so do they meet active pedestrian environment? Another project, this is a senior living center there on federal highway, similar, the inter-district corridor requirements apply here, you have a plaza which is shown in yellow, two direct access for pedestrians to enter the building. The plaza contains some intimate seating areas and public space, bike racks, and the parking is enclosed in the back. Do they achieve an active pedestrian environment? Yes. Another project, didn't really have a name, so we call it Twenty-Ninety Federal Plaza. Was it TJ's, I think, or some TJ's when it opened up? Yeah, when it opened up, it's in several spots. Same thing, inter-district corridor, you know, direct access into the building, there's outdoor seating there, landscaping, the bike rack is a little hidden in this image, and then the parking is in the rear, so do they activate the frontage? Yes. Another project, I think this was going to be Mad Men, not Mad Men, it's a show, Mad Men, I think, when they first came in. This is the inter-district corridor, they have direct access to the building, parking in the back, outdoor seating was on the site plan. Do they activate? Yes. And lastly, one of the aspects of our analysis goes in the context of the area, you know, what's happening in the area, what do we look at? Well, subject site you see in red, the blue areas are existing on our side for this Federal here, because the west side is Oakland Park. So you see existing conditions to the north, or buildings closer, older buildings, some backout parking, the existing parking lot to the south of the Crow Ridge Mall, and then you look on west side of the road is Oakland Park, but what is happening there is newer projects are coming in with the activation of federal highway. There's the Bahama Breeze, all outdoor dining is facing that with the entrance right at the corner of the building. And a newer project, I think it's called Oakland, at the round corner, the frontage along federal highway is activated with ground for retail sidewalk and so forth. So we look at the context of the area, what's happening. Why that's important is what, what is the future planned for, what's happening in the area, what does it want to look like when it grows up, basically, and that's why we look at the context of the area, so we can plan for the future. So this is a quick markup that staff did, not that we're great drawers, not that we're trying to redesign or render the project, but we said, you know, what would it look like if the corner had an, an entrance? This was just a potential solution that staff put out. There could be other solutions that can activate the pedestrian environment, we just said, hey, if you do this, this may achieve the intent of the section. So that was a quick rendering. What I also want to kind of conclude on is, this is not unusual to have an entrance at the corner for grocery store, especially Publix. There's several local ones that have their entrance at the corner. This is, one on the left is in Five Points Mall Manners, the Galleria Publix across from the Galleria Mall has corner entrance. I picked, we're out of the area, I picked one from Midtown Atlanta, which is on the left, but then also, there's the downtown Fort Lauderdale one, which is off Andrews. So it's possible to do that. Is it only a solution? No, there could be more, but we wanted to highlight that we tried, trying to solve it for them. And with that, I will take any questions.
Brad?
So the only problem that the city has is that they want an entrance, and where would that entrance go? Isn't that the parking lot? Like, where's that entrance going into? Just go back, yeah, that, nope, back. I don't know.
Go forward, go forward.
Yeah, there you go, keep going.
To our, to our marked up rendering?
Yeah, your marked up, okay. Isn't that, isn't that the parking lot that that entrance would be going into? That, that's the, that's the exit out, right? And there's the parking lot there, so you have an entrance into the parking lot?
The, I don't know if that's how they would solve it, they could relocate that, that's only egress, it comes out, it doesn't go in.
Right, it's an egress, so then how, how would you propose to solve that? They've already gone through this whole thing. I thought this was an issue of moving the Publix entrance over to where the liquor store was, and the liquor store over to where the entrance was. Did the city ever suggest that?
We, yes, actually, we asked, said about the liquor store going to the corner, and that would solve, possibly solve it by putting an active corner use, which could be one solution as well. These are, this is just a several, they can come up with another solution if they want.
That's not my question. My question was, did the city suggest that the liquor store gets switched with the entrance to Publix? So the Publix would be 130 feet, and the liquor store would be 210 feet. Did the city ever suggest that?
No, what we suggested was that the liquor store go to the corner, like you see in the rendering.
So the activation on the corner for the people walking on the sidewalk would be a liquor store?
That was one solution.
Right.
Just closer to the actual people that are out there today on that sidewalk.
Right, I got it. So the, so the sidewalk that they expanded in that area, and the work that they did on the side, that's not consistent, is what you're saying, is that's not consistent with activation of that corner, where they put like a little plaza there and an entrance into the actual area. That's not consistent, is what the city is arguing. I just want to make sure I get the city, the city side clear.
We're saying the land use adjacent to this is not pedestrian-related and activating the pedestrian environment, because it's vehicular.
Because it's vehicular. The, that sidewalk where, where all those people are in the rendering, right? And this is your rendering.
This is our marked-up.
Right. That sidewalk where there's like a, I don't know, if it's 20 feet, could you tell me how long that is, Robert? How, how wide that is, that sidewalk area where that plaza is? Is that about 20 feet?
The plaza area.
Thirty-eight feet from the building to the property.
Okay. So that, wide, I'm talking wide.
You're talking this way or this way?
Well, from the.
Long way?
About 10 feet.
That, no, that's not 10 feet.
How wide is it? Do we know how to width?
Thirty-eight feet.
Thirty-eight feet.
So that, that wide area where that's like a, I guess it's a pedestrian park, plaza, that, that doesn't meet the requirements of the city? You don't think that, that's?
It meets the requirement for the items listed under 40, the 20-foot yard area. So basically, you could have trellises, plazas, benches, bike racks, those elements, they provided the plaza. That's not what our challenging question is. Our question is, is this a active and superior pedestrian environment? And conclusion was no, because that plaza is disconnected from the entrances and the activity that's occurring on the ground level, adjacent land use is parking, not pedestrian-driven.
And the other issue that I have is the examples that you showed, most of those, no one uses the front entrances, right? I mean, you've been there to these, to these examples, I mean.
Well, that's the only entrance into Five Points.
No, 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 not those, go, keep going. The ones that you used on US-1. So like where Anthony's is, yeah, Trader Joe's, Anthony's, everyone, no one comes in, no one takes a walk on Federal and comes into those buildings from the front, everyone's entering. You never been?
I've been to Anthony's, yeah, but.
Okay, would you go in the front?
I drove there.
Yeah, and you parked in the back?
I parked in the back because I drove, yes.
Right, and then you go in through the back, right? Have you ever gone in through the front of Anthony's off of Federal? Have you ever taken a stroll down Federal and?
Well, no, I typically don't stroll on Federal. But you're not trying to design for me, this isn't about applying how it, but there, you have to balance it from people that drive to people that also take transit to people that walk.
I get it, I get it.
So that's the whole.
I'm just, well, I'm just asking.
Oh, no, I'll tell you the truth, I drive, I'm a driver.
Yeah, and then Medmen, you don't see, what was Medmen, I don't know, the weed place that was there, and then there was a place, I think, called Blaze or something else that was, right, hamburgers, pizzas, everything that goes out of business in that plaza. Has anyone ever gone, have you gone to any of those businesses from the front?
Have I not? Because I just told you I drive everywhere, because I'm a driver, so not everybody's a driver, though.
And I get it, and I get it, I'm just trying to weigh, you know, when, when people come in front of us and they have an improvement in an area such as this, and this is, you would agree with me, this is a vast improvement on what's there, correct?
Architecturally, yes.
Okay. And, well, in every way, I would say it's a vast improvement. Is there any way that it's not a vast improvement? Let's do that.
Well, I mean, no, it is an improvement to the site, yes.
Okay. So what my problem is, is the activation now from the sidewalk, what's the activation now from the existing sidewalk? What's that activation look like?
The existing conditions?
Yeah, existing.
It's a one-way drive with parallel parking, that you could walk into the Publix.
Right.
And I don't think there is a sidewalk connection there.
There isn't.
You have to walk in the street, yes.
So you'd agree with me, there's no real activation now, right?
In existing conditions, no.
Okay. And before, not your version, but their version, would you say that's an improvement on the activation?
It's an overall improvement to the site, yes.
Okay. And so the, the only thing that the staff is hung up about is that they want a, some sort of entrance from that location on the sidewalk, on Federal, directly on Federal Highway?
We're asking for activation, because that's the intent of the section of the code is an active and superior pedestrian environment. The pedestrian environment is defined as the interaction between the land use, adjacent land use, so the use, the use of the building, and the inter-district corridor. So that's where we say is that pedestrian. That interaction is not pedestrian, it's vehicular, vehicular. That's where, that's where city staff is saying, you have not met this intent, because it's not pedestrian-related. Yes, the plaza's there, yes, you have the sidewalk in the inter-district corridor, but what is happening with the adjacent land use? It is car-driven, it's egress coming out of the covered parking.
Sure, can I make a comment?
Yeah.
Some of these, to follow up on what Brad's, some of the examples that staff used, and I understand where you guys are coming from, and trying to make sure this is intermodal from this, you were using example of a residential building. So I discounted that right away, because, you know, yes, there's going to be people that come out of the senior center, that then walk across to go to the restaurant, and they want to walk back. But there's nobody walking along Federal and then saying, aside from the people that are going into that, like, nobody on this board will be walking into that lobby of that old-age home. Only the people that live there are going to be going in there. And then some of the other ones that were examples, whereas there is no residential, this is not downtown, so part of what I have a problem with, if this was located, you know, in Victoria Park, where there is actual neighborhoods and residences, but this is suburbia, I mean, the majority of people that are going in there, if you took a counter and counted how many people go into that Publix that did not come by a vehicle, it's got to be less than 2%. I mean, and that would be on the high side. You don't see people walking, because there's no neighborhoods near there. So I'm trying to justify in my mind, if you're just moving the entrance for the few people that might be walking along there, I don't see a balance with that, with all the other new amenities, personally. So I would be, I would be voting tonight to actually approve this.
Thanks, Brian.
So, real quick, just to address that, you know, we have to look at the planning of the future, and we know that the mixed-use corridors is what we're looking at as far as a future project coming forth. We actually kicked it off a couple of months ago, as far as outreach, the initial outreach. The context of the area, you have to realize that we have to take into account what could possibly be there. Well, there have surface parking in the mall itself that could be redeveloped into residential buildings. There's also what's happening on the west side of Federal Highway, which is Oakland Park, has two residential projects coming in, the Oakland, which is the one that's done, and the one that they're now starting construction across the street. They're probably not going to get in a car just to go to the grocery store if they can cross over pedestrian-wise safely and get to that store. That's the things we need to think about. The existing commercial corridor, digital projects.
But if they can walk two blocks from a new development, they can walk 200 feet from the corner to the front door, in my mind. Because if they've already walked blocks to get there, that little extra, that's where I'm having the disconnect, because it really boils down to that we're, that staff is denying based upon 100 feet of an entrance. I mean, that's what I'm taking away from this, and I don't see if somebody's walking a mile to get there to walk an extra 100 feet. In my mind, I don't see it.
Thank you. Jackie?
Yes, I, so the real issue is, the Florida statute, running out of time, you guys have not come to a meeting of the minds, that's why we're here tonight, right?
The basis of denial with those two factors, yes.
When I look at the projects that you showed us, Jim, that's all new construction. I think it's easy to dig, I think it's easy for people to follow your inter-district corridor information if it's new construction. But here we have a situation where we've got an older, older building, you're not tearing it down, right, Robert? You are tearing it down?
It's a whole new building.
It's a two-story.
Okay, that's a problem. I, I didn't really realize it was all coming down and then going, oh, boy.
And the building is coming closer to Federal Highway, the parking area will come closer to Federal Highway.
Okay, I missed that, and I apologize.
Okay.
Okay.
Sherry?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, Jimmy, you talked about having the need for active and superior pedestrian environment, and denying it, finding that there is no direct pedestrian access. And we heard that there is no definition of direct pedestrian access, yet we look at the picture, and I don't see it now, of course, and it's Robert's picture, I don't know if you have it, the new, the new design.
There you go.
That's the marked-up one. Yeah. I'll get it up for a second, hold on.
Nope. Is that it, Robert, is that it?
Yep.
Okay, so, so then I'm to understand that staff thinks that that is not representative of active, superior pedestrian environment, that there is not direct access to the building? And I just don't see how that can be. There's a sidewalk, an enormous sidewalk that goes directly to the building. And so I think we're splitting hairs over what direct is, and there's no definition of it. And so without that definition, and looking at that clearly having direct access to the building, even if it is 110 feet or 220 feet down the road, down the sidewalk, it is yet direct access to the building. So for purposes of the definition, and therefore adherence to the requirements, I see that this plainly is active and superior pedestrian environment with direct access to the building.
So you are correct, the direct access is not defined, similar to active and superior pedestrian environment is not defined. The pedestrian environment is generally defined as the interaction between what's happening on the adjacent land use, meaning the use itself, and the pedestrian environment or the public realm environment, which is the sidewalk, the inter-district corridor requirements. Direct access to the entrance was the solution we were providing them.
How is this not direct access to the building?
To the, for, under the definition of an active and superior pedestrian environment, we did not, is the interface between the adjacent land use and the inter-district corridor. So what's happening?
The interface being that green little area there?
It's the drive aisle, it's the pink.
Right, so you have, the two is the area that we said there's no, if you want to talk about direct pedestrian access, that would occur there in our minds, the staff. One is the use itself, which is parking, and then three is the plaza, four is the conflict with vehicular. So that is, to us, is not active, superior design. Superior design would not have this design components altogether.
Can you go back to the picture one more time? And I won't beat this to death, but I just want to point this out again. So I see interaction in that buffer, that intermodal, not intermodal zone, what is that?
The landscape, where the landscape is, the sidewalk?
The landscape, that buffer that we can now, at election, a developer may use, utilize in other ways other than simply having a buffer by putting trellises, bikes, seating areas, et cetera. And then I see a sidewalk, super-long, super-wide, from the sidewalk adjacent to Federal Highway for pedestrians to go directly to the building. I don't see, I'm not, personally, I'm not seeing the conflict. And so with that, I, I find, in my point of view, that this meets that standard precisely.
You done, Sherry?
Yes, I'm done, thanks.
John, do you have a comment or a question?
Yep, couple of comments, questions, no motion yet.
We still have to go to the public area.
So I think the trap here is, we're all looking at an existing Publix that doesn't have a lot of these amenities, and we're making the comparison. So we're looking at this new Publix, like, wow, this is great compared to what they got. But if this was an empty parcel, which it should be considered that, it's no, it's lost all its non-conforming statuses and all of those privileges that might come with an existing building. The existing site, you know, have they gone to DOT? Have they talked to DOT about entrances and all that? You know, it's interesting, because you're basically giving up a lot by redeveloping this thing. And I think they've done an incredible job with a lot of what Robert described. You know, the buffers are great, you know, lessening the conflicts that exist there today. You know, I go to that Publix a lot, I'm super familiar with it. Coming in and out of that plaza on any one of those driveways from Federal Highway is dangerous. Introducing pedestrians there, you really have to enhance what you're doing, just to be careful, because traffic zips onto that property, because you're coming off a pretty fast street, the speed limit's pretty high on Federal, and you're zipping into that property. So any conflict point coming in from a car, including pedestrians, is a concern. Now, to make pedestrians the priority, and to enhance that pedestrian connection to the building, is first and foremost. That little driveway there, and I know, Robert, you talked about how it was so important to Publix to have that outlet there? I don't agree. I mean, I'm looking at that parking garage, and you have full access all the way around, you could easily come right back to the entrance on the east and get rid of that. That's like a token exit that I'm like, really? That's what they're hanging their hat on? That's, that's going to make or break their project, that little exit? I don't know, man, to me, it seemed disingenuous when I'm looking at an open plaza that could easily extend all the way up to the building, there'd never be a conflict with a car there. I liked your idea, that was fantastic with the arm. But again, could it be better? Is it superior? Yes, it's far superior to what's there now, but it's not superior to what could be done. I think there's a lot of nice things here. I totally get staff, you know, I struggle with that all the time. Some of the examples you guys showed up there, I was involved in. It's pluses and minuses, right? But, you know, at the end of the day, it does reduce that, that potential conflict with those cars coming in and out. So I would like to see a better connection there. I encourage the attorney to speak to the developer about it, and I wish they would do it, but hey, you know, I'm just one vote, so that's my opinion.
Thank you. Seeing no other lights, I'm going to throw my two cents, and then we'll open up to the public for comment. So looking at the required standards, let me digress. I live very, very close to this Publix, and because of the conditions around it, which may be why they're doing this, I do not go to this Publix anymore. I now go to the new one down in the 18, 1900 block. But I look, you've got a Red X at outdoor dining. Well, I think to myself, thank God, because I only can imagine who's going to be dining there, and I would challenge a lot of people to, to go up there and look at, at what is happening up there. Bicycle racks, benches, benches are, everything's already overwhelmed by the homeless, if you want to call them homeless, to me, the mentally ill, doesn't matter, but they, they are all out there. The other thing that's important for me, when you go to a grocery store, at least when I go, you know, I may have an eight-pack of Coke, and I've got laundry detergent, and I've got the, I'm not walking there to carry that home, even if it's across the street to the development, the brand-new Oakland development across the street, nor am I riding a bike. So that doesn't apply to me as much either. The last thing I'll say is, you brought up the Wiltman Manners Publix, which I go there as well, and the one down across from the Galleria, that both have the corner entrance. I think the reason they have a corner is because they're an end cap in a strip center. They're not a freestanding building like this. And quite frankly, to me, the corner is far inferior than having a, an entrance in the middle, because there's so much congestion of people trying to get in, and then you've got all the clerks and all the places where you bag and all that to get out. That corner of that building is, is, is difficult to navigate. So that's my perspective. I think, and obviously, it is far superior what's there now, I think it's very functional. So that's my perspective on it. Is there anybody else wanting to say, say anything before we open to the public? Do you have anything more, Jim?
Yep.
Okay. At this point, if there's anyone from the public that would like to be heard on this, sir, please come forward. You have to come up to the mic. Were you sworn in, sir? Did you get, were you, were you here for the swearing? We were doing a lot of swearing early on, you're going to need to get sworn in.
Yeah, hi, my name's, oh, I'm sorry.
Is there anybody else that's going to be speaking on this? Okay.
Sir, do you swear?
He's going to, he's going to swear you in before you.
Okay.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give would be truthful and accurate?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have you all stated your name?
Yes, Bruce Quahley, and I'm one of the directors of Coral Ridge Country Club Estates, where this is located. And I don't know whether, does everybody know exactly what encompasses that? Okay. Which, you know, basically is the intercoastal to US-1, commercial to Oakland. And in that, we have, I know, over 5,000 residents, and almost everybody goes to this Publix and this center. Publix and this center. And it's, you know, it's, it's our Publix. And we, we're behind the project. We think it's, you know, there might be a couple little things that you guys, I know, are a little fuzzy about, but it's, 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 it's nice. We need something like this. And, you know, and the talk too about the pedestrians and so on, you know, what you see at the corner of Oakland and Federal are a number of homeless people. Those would be the pedestrians that would walk up there and, and whatever, you know? And if the liquor store was, wasn't the closest, they'd grab it a couple bottles. But yeah, we're, we're behind it, and we have, in our, within our organization, we have a, like a development review committee ourselves on things. And Tim Hernandez is, is our president, and Tim and I talk all the time. And then Karen Polifka, and then me, we're the three that are on it, because we all have real estate experience in, in various ways. So yeah, we're all for it, and I hope you approve it. And that's, that's how, that's how we, how we feel.
It's Mr. Quahley, right?
Yes, Bruce Quahley.
If you would do me a favor in the back, there's a form like this. If you'll fill it out before you leave. No, it's in back there.
Oh, okay. All right.
That came after the swearing. We, we swear, then we sign, then we're not going to swear anymore, and, but this is for the official records.
Okay, fine. Now, you say you live real close to the center, too?
I do.
It, within the, within our community, or?
No.
Oh, okay.
No.
Okay, gotcha. Okay.
That's all left. Okay. All right. Is there anyone else that wants to be heard on this?
Chair, real quick, Tyler had corrected me on two things. One, the.
Let me close the public.
Okay.
At this point, we'll bring it back to the board. An additional comment. Go ahead, Jim.
Tyler corrected me that we did talk to the applicant about the liquor store entrance and the main store entrance, which I think Brad asked about, which we recommended switching them. And Tyler said we did, which I think I've misspoken. I said no. The other thing is clarification on where the benches are, and bike racks are not anywhere in the plaza or the inter-district corridor. They're actually in front of the store entrances. Just clarification on those two.
Makes a lot of sense. All right. Are there any other questions or comments for the applicant or the city before we consider next steps? I'm going to ask Mr. Dwayne Spence in a minute. Seeing and hearing none. Dwayne, in order to make a motion on this, can you point whomever may be on the board which section they're doing it?
So we did not draft a guide for this particular circumstance, but you would be using the first motion for the site plan, level three, slightly modified. And the way that it's going to be modified is that the action that the board can take now is to reject, approve, or amend the decision of the DRC. So you would just be inserting that in front of the language that speaks to the, what the resolution, if it's approving, you would be rejecting the decision of the DRC and approving the site plan. If it's denying, you would be.
Reject.
Approving the decision of the DRC and denying the application. And the third option is to amend, and that would also be an approval.
So a quick question.
So if you're amending or rejecting the DRC, you would use paragraph one. If you are rejecting, if you are approving the DRC, you'll be using paragraph two.
So you'd say, I'm moving to reject the, i-if that was the case?
Correct.
You'd say, I'm moving to reject.
I'm moving to adopt the resolution to reject the DRC recommendation and approving a site plan.
So the hopatato of the last couple of months have been the 180-day period. What happens to that in either scenario, either rejection or approval?
So, so for, for the record, the 180 days just puts the fire under staff to make a decision. So I just wanted to correct slightly the exchange between member Scott and Jim Hetzel. The reason for denial is not the 180 days, but the 180 days was what pushed staff to make the decision to deny. So a, a decision has to be made within the statutory timeframe. This appeal is not affected by that 180-day, or in that ca, that case it's a 120-day period.
No, no, we're, we're.
So did, I know that we.
That's what triggered the denial.
Okay, but.
It ran out of time.
A decision, the statute just requires that a decision needs to be made. A decision has been made, so the, the time is not running, and you are now making a decision whether or not to affirm that decision or reject that decision or amend it.
Based on the decision that's made tonight, does the expiration of the 180 days prevent the City Commission from being able to call up the item?
No.
Mr. Chair, I've got one more question.
Go ahead.
So typically, on these level-three approvals, these site plan level threes, there's, you know, the approval, and then there's staff conditions, usually as in our package. And we say with staff conditions. In this case, there are no staff conditions. It would just be the DRC as presented, no?
So, so this is a site plan level two that staff has rejected, but their conditions are still provided in the backup of the, this, in the staff report.
And are you guys in agreement with all the conditions?
We are. The, the only condition that's, you know, a little bit, would have to continue to work with staff, but we trust staff, and hopefully same, is that everything, we receive our certificate of compliance within 90 days. That relies on the city also doing its part within 90 days. But I'm sure if that ever became an issue, we could figure out a way to deal with that. So, if that makes sense. I, I don't know how the city attorney feels about that.
So does that need to be stated in the motion?
In other words, one of the conditions is that we have to obtain our certificate of compliance within 90 days. The reason we were rejected was we were a stalemate. Hopefully, we don't continue to be a stalemate if this board takes action decisively.
And what about the request that I made that you had mentioned that the developer was willing to do?
Yeah, we, we agree with adding bike, bike racks to the plaza area and also including an arm for the driveway. That's okay at that corner. Thank you.
Okay, so we're clear, and we're ready for a motion. Would somebody like to make a motion?
All right, I'll attempt to make the motion. So I'm moving to reject the DRC recommendation of the site plan level three, right? It is the site plan level three. I thought it was a two.
It's a two.
A site, site plan level two, case number UDP S23044, with the city staff report that the applicant agreed, through the portions of the city staff report that the applicant agreed, was applicable. And then do I go on to say, and the board hereby finds that the application meets the standard requirements of the ULDR?
Yes, you do.
Okay. And the board hereby finds that the application meets the standard requirements of the ULDR and the criteria proposed for the use as cited in the resolution. What I wanted to ask was, what was that additional, the 90 days? Do I need to add that to my motion?
So I, I do need clarification, because your, your motion kind of addresses it, you said what the applicant agrees to, but I don't know if we have necessarily on record what conditions the applicant agrees to.
Okay.
He, he stated concern about the 90 days, but.
Okay, let me, let me go back then. The conditions that we agreed to are the, in addition to the city conditions, a condition that we install a guard arm at the exit of the eastern, I'm sorry, western entrance.
I'm sorry, can we make some, some clarification?
Sure.
There are, um, three staff condition, there's three conditions in the staff report?
Correct.
And then there are additional verbal requests by the.
He's, he's making, he's going through the.
I understand that, but how do you want that to be, that additional request by the board?
You're asking novices to prepare language that we haven't prepared before. I, to me, being one of those laymen, I would like to hear it explained in layman's terms and then have it blended to where everybody is in agreement on what it's supposed to be.
Correct. What's, what's happening is the applicant's attorney is putting these additional conditions on the record, and then the resolution will incorporate those conditions. So, if Mr. Lockery can continue.
Yeah. So one additional condition, so condition number four is that we add a guard arm at the western exit from the garage, and number two, that we install bike racks in the plaza located on the southwest, to the southwest of the store, or west of the store.
So.
My concern about the number one condition, and I, I really need to have an answer, not just bring up problems, is the way it's worded. If approved, the applicant shall have 90 days to address any outstanding DRC comments and obtain final certificate of compliance. And so I may ask staff to maybe collaborate on this. We're very comfortable that we can respond within 30 days. But then the question is, if, if the city's in good faith, assuming this gets voted on, and.
I believe that the process to get sign off from the DRC members was not completed. So that's what it means about outstanding comments is more the sign off by all the members. And there were some members that did not provide their sign off on the project, may have nothing to do with addressing comments, but by the expiration date, that was the situation.
Right.
So this gives a lot, this allows enough time to make sure.
How about, how about if we were to amend it, say, 120 days?
Yes, that's fine. We're agreeable to that.
Okay.
And I'll amend.
And if, if DRC still doesn't come, you guys don't get on the same page, is this relief to come back again before this board?
No, you're conditioning, you're conditioning this board's approval on them.
Well, then let's do this. Then let's get rid of the time period, because I don't know what purpose it serves anyway, frankly. I mean, we're here because of this very situation.
Right. And just so I can clarify something, other than this entrance area, were there any other things that DRC was rejecting besides this entrance area? Because what I don't want to have happen is, we say, okay, I'm good with this. I reject DRC's recommendation about this entrance area. And then he goes back, and then you guys say, hey, I'm going to, now I want to look at this, or I want to look at.
As of the expiration date, the DRC members did not provide their sign off. I think that's just because of the expiration date was approaching, and they didn't have time to do so. So with the status of the denial letter, they did not have all the signatures from their viewers. Do I think there's comments that are outstanding that need to be addressed that's going to cause a problem? No.
Okay. But this is resolved with my motion. If, if my motion passes, this, this issue would be resolved with the entrance, et cetera, et cetera.
But, but for the record, those, the DRC members have not signed off approving it.
I get it.
So we, we can't, without them being present, I can't say to you that, I mean, I, I understand being a part of the process, there's some assurance that they will get the comments addressed, but I can't make that assertion to you that this will be it.
So the motion excludes the 90 days, 120 days. It excludes any timeframe to get this done by.
I mean, we hope to get it done within 30, but that would be great.
And I'll amend my motion to include the exclusion of the time period.
I'm sorry, are you amending the conditions in the staff report?
They, they have. So they've amended condition one to remove the timeframe. The condition remains the same with regards to, if approved, the applicant shall address all outstanding DRC comments and obtain a final certificate of compliance. And then they are, the two additional conditions, as stated on the record by applicant's counsel, will also be added as conditions four and five.
Is the 90 days staying in the condition three?
No. And condition three, you say condition three? No. Condition three, oh. Uh, no, it's not. So that was, the condition three was conditioned upon whether or not this board amended the site plan approval. So you are correct for pointing that out. That, that's not relevant in this particular case.
So is it entirely coming off?
Yes.
So then his conditions would be, there'd be actually just four, not five?
That's correct.
So is that acceptable? Is what you believe to be where we're at?
Yes, it is, and we're comfortable with that.
Okay.
Another correction. So the, the conditions were kind of the, a Mad Lib of conditions. So condition two is only relevant if there was a denial.
Oh.
So that will also need to be stricken. And the one written staff condition minus the timeframe, and the two additional conditions stated on the record by the applicant would be applicable in a case of approval.
If his, if the motion is approved?
If, if the resolution that's on the floor is approved. Correct.
So I had the motion to reject the DRC recommendation of the site plan level two with the city staff condition, and then the board approves the, I didn't hear your last part on that, the second part you needed to read.
And then the, the board hereby finds that the application meets the standard and requirements in the ULDR, and criteria for proposed use is cited in the resolution.
If the chair is ready, I can read the resolution, and you can call the vote.
That'd be wonderful. Thank you.
Sure. A resolution of the planning and zoning board of the city of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, approving a site plan level two development permit for the construction of a new grocery store with parking on ground level for the property located at 3,400 North Federal Highway, Fort Lauderdale, Florida, as further identified in the Broward County Public Records, and the Boulevard Business B1 Zoning District, and rejecting the Development Review Committee's decision to deny the site plan level two development permit, case number UDP S23044, providing for conflicts, providing for separability, and providing for ineffective date.
Thank you, sir. All right, we have a motion. Would somebody like to second the motion? I'm sorry, was that you, Sherri? Thank you. Sherri McCartney, second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Will you call the vote, please?
Yes. Ms. McCartney?
Yes.
Mr. McTeague?
Yes.
Mr. Baranca?
No.
Mr. Donaldson?
Yes.
Mr. Gannon?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Vice Chair Cohen?
Yes.
Chair Weymouth?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion passes. Okay. Wrapping this up, is there any communication to the City Commission? Hearing and seeing none. Is there anything for the good of the city of Fort Lauderdale? Hearing, seeing none. I think we are good to adjourn. Merry Christmas, happy holidays.
Merry Christmas.
See you in January.
Just want to make sure that everybody signed the attendance sheet.
Is that the one, uh? I haven't got anything since I met you in the driveway. Here, here. I'm giving, I'm giving you this, too.